To the Pickwess City Commission Meeting. I need a motion to adjourn from-
Make a motion to adjourn from executive session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Grissom.
Aye.
Commissioner Hines.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Mayor Pearson.
Aye.
Commissioner Vedder.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving into the agenda, we have consent agenda, approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes from the August 15, 2023 Regular City Commission Meeting. Resolution number R-104-23. A resolution establishing trick-or-treat beggars' night in the city of Pickwa.
I've been getting a lot of questions about that, so.
Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
For the minutes?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And is there a motion for the resolution R-104-23?
I make a motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I will read the resolution establishing trick-or-treat beggars' night in the city of Pickwa. Whereas, the annual celebration of Halloween has become a tradition in Pickwa. And whereas, Thursday, October 26, 2023, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. has been designated as trick-or-treat beggars' night. Whereas, this date of the last Thursday in October has been established by the Miami County Council for all of Miami County through 2025. And the council recommends that all communities adopt this date. And now therefore be it resolved by the commission of the City of Pickwa, Miami County, Ohio, the majority of all members elected thereto, concurring that this commission hereby proclaims Thursday, October 26, 2023, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. as official trick-or-treat beggars' night in the city of Pickwa. Thank you.
Hopefully, we have good weather.
Yeah.
Not raining cold.
Okay, we're going to move on to old business. And at this time, there will be no public comment with this ordinance as we've already had open forum. We've had three readings of the ordinance, two listening sessions as well. So at this time, ordinance number O-6-23 postponed. I would like to make a motion to reopen this ordinance, O-6-23.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Lee.
No.
Commissioner Hines.
Aye.
Mayor Pearson.
Aye.
Commissioner Vedder.
Aye.
Commissioner Grissom.
Aye.
It has been approved to reopen ordinance number O-6-23. At this time, I would like to make a motion to amend ordinance O-6-23 to the current vision, version that it represents. Is, is there a motion?
I'll move that.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Lee.
No.
Commissioner Hines.
Aye.
Mayor Pearson.
Aye.
Commissioner Vedder.
Aye.
Commissioner Grissom.
Aye.
It has been, the motion has been approved to amend this ordinance, ordinance number O-6-23, to the current version.
And can I clarify? That is the current version that's on our website, correct?
Yes.
It is, correct.
When was the last update to that? July 20?
The date on there is August 14th. The version on the website has all the different iterations, the changes that were made along the way.
So at this time, I would also like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number O-6-23.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Lee.
No.
Commissioner Hines.
Aye.
Mayor Pearson.
Aye.
Commissioner Vedder.
Aye.
Commissioner Grissom.
Nay.
It has been moved to accept an ordinance number O-6-23. Motion is carried. Moving on to new business, ordinance number O-9-23, first reading.
An ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the construction, acquisition, and equipping of park improvements, facilities, and appurtenances related thereto.
Thank you, members of commission. This item relates to the Lock Nine Park improvements and the interest in being able to advance the final phase of the project. The item that you have before you this evening is to authorize an internal borrowing process which would allow us to secure enterprise funds to be able to fund the final phase of the project and be effectively borrowing the money from, from our enterprise fund to accomplish that. We have with us this evening two consultants who we've been working with to help put this program together. Brian Cooper from Baker Tilling Associates and Emmett Kelly from Frost Brown Todd. They are really the experts in the mechanics of how this works. So I'm going to ask them if they wouldn't mind coming to the lectern and speaking to how their process would work.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Brian Cooper with Baker Tilly.
Emmett Kelly with Frost Brown Todd. Good evening.
Good evening.
Do you want to give a rundown on the ordinance?
Sure. Yeah, and the ordinance, you would be considering authorizing an internal borrowing from your enterprise fund, I think specifically the sewer fund. Those dollars that are there in reserve are invested in eligible investments, in government obligations, et cetera. You're effectively investing in yourself. And that's what the ordinance is authorizing you to do, to use those funds to use on a short-term basis, a one-year note. And it would be paid back with the strength of a levy, but the intent is never to have that levy collected because you're going to use monies from your general fund. So after a portion of years, you'll probably roll over the note, pay it down as you go, I think is the plan. And so it's good to use your funds.
Great, thank you.
The notes will bear an interest rate that is similar to what an investor could get out in the market. We've recently advised the interim finance director of that interest rate. I believe it's a 392. And so the city on the general fund side will be borrowing at 392 and the sewer fund will be collecting 392 in interest every year on those notes. Since it's a one-year instrument, after a term of one year, the notes will be reissued. Another ordinance will come before the commission. The finance director and administrative team will determine the amount of notes to pay down. And you'll likely roll the notes again for another year at least before paying them off in full. We'll be happy to answer any questions you might have about the financing.
To be clear, the enterprise funds really are the, really are the, the funds owned by citizens of the Pick, of the city. And by giving ourselves an internal loan, we're going to be investing in them. Because when it's paid back, they will be held harmless for, for the activity.
That's 100% correct.
Do I understand that correctly?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, instead of going out and borrowing from a bank or, or other investors, you're basically investing in yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right. Are there any other questions from commission?
And I'm assuming this is something we need to move on pretty quickly.
Yeah, we can't lock the interest rate until we have full authorization from the commission. So I would-
If interest rates rising, it might be good to-
I would recommend moving forward as quickly as you can. Yep.
Can I make a motion for that? I'd like to make a motion to waive the three reading rule.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Hines.
Aye.
Mayor Pearson.
Aye.
Commissioner Vedder.
Aye.
Commissioner Grissom.
Nay.
That ordinance has been adopted. Thank you both very much.
That was just-
We got to vote. But we also need, is there any more comments?
Are there any more comments to be made?
Any public comment?
Thank you.
Gary Conick, Five Peregrine Place, candidate fifth ward commission. I just learned of this in the discussion. One thing you should consider as you take money from this water fund and an enterprise fund is that, as far as I know, we haven't made a decision on whether you're going with modified natural flows, the, you know, these multiple scenarios. And you certainly could use funds from the water fund to pay for modified natural flows. Because over the years, you have been using that source of waters, one of the three sources of water for the city of Pickwa. So if you're going to take these funds for basically park, then we're taking it from potentially flood control. I have a civil engineer. I'm always more interested in flood control because of the potential suffering of citizens. So just keep that in mind. Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
And I think the other thing, Gary, is, is that we did pass a minimum kind of guidelines for each of those enterprise funds.
Yes.
But that's been done.
You haven't met any of those. And I certainly hope, I heard Commissioner Lee say loud and clear, we were not going to increase utility rates in order to achieve those standards. And you haven't met them even with the large surpluses. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Any other citizen comments? Is there a motion?
I make a motion. Oh, sorry.
Dave Hitchens, 305 Westview. The way I understand it, no taxes are going to be raised on the citizens to fund this. It's all just internal.
Correct.
Correct.
And what is the big rush of pushing this through on the first reading? When is this going to effect? When are we going to use these funds?
So, so the biggest thing is they finance rates. If they're going up, so if we don't-
I understand that. But when are we going to use those funds? You're just pushing this through without no comments from anybody. And this is baloney. We're tired of this stuff getting pushed through and shoved down our throats.
So the, um... Chris, this is for, why don't you go ahead and-
So the funding that you would be authorizing would allow for authorization of the final phase of Lock Nine Park. As you'll recall previously, the authorization was for the current phase, which we're calling Phase Two. This, this funding source is what allows for the project to be completed. So the, the funding, once it's authorized, will allow us to execute the note to do the internal borrowing so that the contract can be authorized for Phase Three, the final phase. That would be, that, we would bring that to you once and if this is authorized. So that could be, you know, within the next month or so, the contract. I would defer to Brian in terms of, I don't know how quickly the, the note structure can be arranged, but I think what you have in your packet is in essence the, the language and text that's needed to be able to move forward with executing the note document. So it should happen pretty quickly.
Well, the way I see it, you're pushing this through because a lot of you are scared your seats are going to be gone at the end of the year. Because three of you are out, right? Are going to be up for vote at the end of this year? Three seats are open?
Yeah.
And the city's run scared because they won't get it pushed through with other people up here that's going to run. And that's, that's a bunch of crap. It's just, it's not right.
Well, I have to say, I've been on this commission for eight years and the Lock Nine Park has been a huge piece of what we have been working on. And it's a huge piece of what's going to help move our city forward. We have businesses that have come to town, one being Crooked Handle, because of what we're doing down at Lock Nine Park. And there's quite a few other businesses that are coming as well. We are really working hard to make this city a destination for people and that people want to come and spend money, even people that don't live here. And so all of this stuff that, that we're doing is really trying to better our community.
But you're spending our tax dollars and we're tired of paying taxes. Senior citizens on, on limited income, disabled people on limited income, they're not going to be able to live here.
But if you understand, we're not raising taxes with this.
But you're still spending money other places.
To better the city.
That's your vision.
That's my, I mean, that's my, that's my perception.
That's our vision.
Yeah.
This is, this is important.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Darren Yinks, 604 West Green Street. How much money will you actually be borrowing? Does anybody have a?
Chris has it.
Yeah, I think the actual borrow amount is 5.8, which is stated in the ordinance in the section one.
Yep, yes, right there, 5.8, budgeted 5.8 expenditure.
And that, that includes both phases of the project, the current phase and the next phase. So what it does is allow for the cash flow on the, the current phase to not put as much burden on the, on the finances as the project's completed. And then allow for the grant resources, the $2 million in grants that we've secured, to begin trickling in so they can be on the books and really draw down that 5.8 to where it's just the second phase that we're really funding with this.
And where are the $2 million in grants coming from?
We have half a million dollars in land and water conservation funds. There's $150,000 from state capital budget three years ago, $150,000 from state capital budget last year. There's 640-some thousand from the Community Development Block Grant CARES Act money. There's 270,000 from Upper Valley Medical Center in, in the form of a donation. There's 180,000 from Miami Conservancy District in support of the work along the levee. And I believe there's another 15,000 from the Long Guard Foundation.
You know, and the exciting thing about this is the money's coming from so many different places in our community, you know, between the hospital and Miami County Conservancy and all those other things. I mean, it's-
Well, the funny thing is, August 8th, when you took the $1 million out of the general fund with only one vote, one reading, because it was an emergency to meet the grant so that you could get the grants, because you were receiving 2.2 million dollars worth of grants at that time. You're taking a million dollars out. You said that was going to be enough to finish covering it. The $2 million that you're talking about is actually money that you've already received for the previous work on. Yes, it is.
We have not received those funds.
You have, because I have an email from your office stating what grants were the, in that total, 2.2 million. So the 2 mil, 2.2 million that you were talking about, when you took the $1 million out originally, was money you already received because I got the dates and where they all came from.
The funds have been awarded. They have not been received. We have to do the work to receive the funds.
You have, you have received them, thank you. Also, we were told by the city manager that the total project was to be $3.8 million. 2.2 coming in on grants and the 1 million you took out of the general fund. And now you're back to borrowing another 5.8 million dollars. So right now, you're at about, what, 7, 8 million dollars for Lock Nine? Does anybody have a budget as to what it's actually going to come in at? Because that's about double what we were told.
No, so the, the amount that's being borrowed currently is to cover, I'm sorry, is to current, to cover until we get the grant reimbursements as revenue. And so you're bridging several-
So how much are you getting? How much are you borrowing then? 5.8 million dollars is what you just said.
No, we don't know until it's over because we valued engineered out a lot of the expenses, so.
That's right. You don't have a clue where this project is coming in at.
I'm not going to argue with you about the financing of the project.
You don't have to argue with me. I know you don't have an idea where it's coming in at.
So until the project's completed and everything is closed out, we don't know what the final number's going to be. Is that correct?
So have you already spent the $1 million? The original $1 million that you just took out of general fund on August 8th and hired-
That was to award Phase Two.
Have you already spent through that money? So that's why you're rushing the borrowing part through.
That is not why.
So then what's the balance left on that money?
The bal, the balance on the $1 million, we haven't finished Phase Two yet.
How, how much have you spent so far?
I don't have that number in front of me, but I'd be happy to get it.
Because we don't have any of the numbers in front of us.
I'll tell you what, if you'd like to make an appointment, I'd be happy to sit down and talk to you.
Sir, sir, you're out of order, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sit down.
Hi, my name is Tanya Blair. I'm a realtor here in town. I do not appreciate Paul following us out like we're going to do something wrong because we didn't agree with what happened. I'm just going to say, I, I have lived in this town for all my life and I'm going to tell you, I don't understand how you all think you're going to take care of Lock Nine when you can't even take care of our parks and our, our schools and our, our swimming pools.
All right, anybody else? I would entertain a motion for ordinance number O-9-23.
I make a motion, we approve ordinance number O-9-23.
Would you call the roll, please?
Was there a second?
Yeah.
I didn't hear you.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Hines.
Aye.
Mayor Pearson.
Aye.
Commissioner Vedder.
Aye.
Commissioner Grissom.
Aye.
Thank you. That ordinance has been approved. Ordinance number O-10-23, first reading.
An ordinance declaring improvements to certain parcels of real property located within the city of Pickwa to be a public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of those service payments, specifying the public infrastructure improvements to be made that directly benefit such real property, and approving and authorizing the execution of a development agreement.
All right, thank you.
Commission, as you know, we have the property at 902 Scott Drive, formerly known as the Red Roof Inn, is currently condemned and it's sitting there in a blighted condition. The property is under contract by a developer who has intentions to redevelop the site with a national sit-down restaurant and, and all likelihood a hotel. In order for them to be able to do that, it takes time to complete the deal with the end users. The National Sit Down Restaurant, they, they are very close to having a lease that's ready to be signed. The hotel user, on the other hand, is something that we completed a hotel study in support of their pursuit of the hotel with the idea being that we, we're asking the developer to do their best to provide the highest and best use in terms of the redevelopment of that site. So currently with the zoning code, the zoning on the property, they could just as easily go get a gas station and a C store and develop the site with, with, you know, something like that. But in the spirit of they're wanting to do what is desired by the community, they're leaving no stone unturned in an effort to, to get the end users that the community has indicated they desire. We know that there's interest in a, a sit-down restaurant. We also know that there's a void in the marketplace in terms of a, a hotel, a national brand hotel for our business travelers and our leisure travelers. And so we think those would be the, the two ideal uses there. The developer is very confident that this could happen. If the hotel, for some reason, were not able to happen, they're confident that they can attract other high-quality end users that would fit the, the character of the site. To do this, what we're putting in front of you this evening is the TIF request that is being introduced here, the Tax Increment Financing Tool. And the reason for that is to, A, have the developer enter into a development agreement which would say that their intent is to secure the hotel and the restaurant and then also prohibit certain other end uses that would be less desirable there, i.e., an adult business, for example. And part of the development agreement is then the developer would commit to purchasing back the property from the city. So I'm kind of jumping around here. There's, there's this item and the next item. This item is the Tax Increment Financing Tool, which we have presented to the Pickwess City Schools and to Upper Valley Career Center. And both of their boards have approved the request in terms of supporting the TIF being put in place for this project. A TIF, as you know, is, is really a mechanism for when the new investment occurs, the property value increases and the, the tax amount collected as a result of the increase in valuation is able to be captured through the Tax Increment Financing Tool and then put back into paying off the costs incurred for public water, sewer, acquisition of the property, and things of that variety. So that TIF would be what will guarantee the, the, the borrowing that the city would do in the next item to acquire the property. And acquiring the property is key at this point because the term of the contract is set to expire at the end of September with a closing date by the end of October. So the time is of the essence in terms of being able to gain control of the property but still provide the developer with the opportunity to go out and, and get those end users that, that have been identified as highly probable for this site. Sorry, that was a little bit of a long-winded explanation, but I wanted to give you the context. You have on the screen a rendering of what the outcome might, would, would be. The National Sit Down Restaurant would orient towards the front of the lot. And then the hotel product would situate behind it, not like, not unlike most, most locations where you see these kind of developments occur. And the, the next slide shows you an economic impact analysis that we had prepared. It's on the PDF, if you've got the PDF on the screen there. The, the economic impact analysis that we had prepared looked at the scenario of if there were a gas station and a convenience store developed there, what would the direct, indirect, and induced impact be in terms of economic impact? And it's about 3.4 million dollars a year, or 38 million dollars over the course of 10 years in terms of the economic impact it would have. If the site were to be developed with a hotel and a restaurant, as is likely to be doable, the economic impact would be about 18 million dollars a year and 207 million dollars over the course of 10 years. So- So, a far greater return on investment in terms of how that site is developed, if we can facilitate the developer being able to secure the restaurant and the hotel. And it also produces, you know, a pretty impressive investment at the gateway to our community. We have with us, again, Baker-Tilling Associates and Emmett Kelly from Frost Brown Todd. They've been helping us with putting these tools together to help facilitate this opportunity. And I'm sure they can answer any of the questions you might have about the particulars of how these mechanisms work, or I can take a shot as well.
So, this is so helpful to have, that information, to look at what would come back with the hotel and a restaurant versus a gas station? So, it seems like, again, this is something that is of the essence, time-wise, because of having to move quickly before something else comes in there? Because we have to do it by the end of September, correct?
Yeah, the...
Excuse me, this is not... I'm talking... This is our time to talk, and then you all...
Yeah, come to the podium when we ask you.
When we ask you.
Not right now.
Not right now. This is commissioner's comment time, and then we'll have public comment.
So, the timing, as I said, the contract, the current contract on the property expires the end of September, so... And then they have thirty days from that date to close, if they intend to do so. The contract will be transferred to the city, one authorization of this, and then we would close prior to that date. So, it's a really tight timeline to get all the loan put in place and to get the closing documents prepared and get everything to happen. And so, if... And then the other issue is, there's an interest rate on this loan as well, so there's some uncertainty there, and the sooner you lock it in, obviously, the better for understanding what the deal outcome will look like.
Do we have any other TIFs in place throughout the city?
We did a TIF three years ago, when IDC Spring expanded. They needed the roadway to be extended on Scarborough Drive.
How'd that work?
It's worked wonderful. The overall project cost, as I recall, is about two hundred and forty thousand. That was a ten-year, seventy-five percent TIF in the first year of payments in lieu of taxes, which is the term for the revenue you receive as a TIF. There was forty thousand dollars received, so if you multiply that out over the course of ten years, it's going to more than pay back for the debt that we incurred. And then the thing with the TIF is that you can also then continue to use those funds if it's more than what you needed to offset your debt obligation to pave the roadways or make other improvements in that general vicinity that support that improvement that was made at that TIF location.
That can be done as well.
Correct, that can happen here as well. We don't anticipate that will happen here, quite honestly. The cost of acquisition, plus the extension of the water and sewer to the site, is likely to far exceed the amount that the TIF would generate on this project, based upon the initial calculations. But it nonetheless is very important to the developer, being able to make the numbers work to attract the type of end-users that we'd like to have here.
You know, this is so exciting. We've been working on things like this for so long, and there are so many... There's not... I mean, the undeveloped parts of I-75 don't exist. So, to have that corner and to be able to have a national chain restaurant, which the community has been asking for for a long time, and a hotel, I mean, that's just a win-win. It really is.
Right.
Yeah. And especially with what's going on at the mall. I mean, you think about destination, you know, that's going to be really exciting.
We are becoming a destination.
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to...
Public comment.
Oh, sorry. Oh, it's going to weigh the...
Any other commissioner comment? Citizen comment?
Oh, my gosh. Diana Park, 438 Zero Brunson Lane. Boy, you guys are excited. None of us are. None of us. You want respect? You disrespect us. You don't listen to the people. You're shameful.
You're going to talk about this issue, ma'am?
Like she said, I'm speaking.
About this issue?
I'm speaking about this issue and many more.
Okay.
You guys have amnesia. You're corrupt. You can laugh. I'd say eighty percent, ninety percent believe that. I know, you don't give a shit. It's quite obvious. You're shameful. I used to think you were strong. You're very weak.
Thank you.
Kevin Jenkins, 619 North Downing Street. Was this the old Red Roof Inn, was it closed down?
It was the one that was closed down, and...
So, because of code violations or something like that? So, who owns that?
What's his name?
Currently, Hattash Patel owns it.
Who?
His organization.
What organization? And are they going to pay to have this building tore down, or what are they going to do? Who pays for that when it happens, if it happens?
So, the... What I just described is, the developer would incur the expenses to develop the site. The city is acquiring it to gain control, and then the developer would be obligated to buy it back from the city by this time next year. That's what's in the development agreement. The developer is responsible for the extension of water and sewer, the roadway improvements, the redevelopment of the site, the demolition of the building, the site pad preparation, and then whatever their lease terms are with the end-users in terms of the vertical build-out.
This is just a toss in the air, there's no guarantees to nothing, is there? I mean, you've had time to get potential buyers, because it's been empty for a while. I don't know, I don't know much about that, maybe I'm just tweaking on that. But what's... What's the guarantees for a potential buyer to come in and do that? Or you're going to put a gas station, like you said, another gas station?
Do not want a gas station there.
No.
That's the whole point.
And that's why we're trying to...
I said, there's no gas station in this town.
And that's why we're trying to move...
We don't want a gas station there.
And that's why we're trying to move so quickly on this, because if we don't get it done by the end of September, we could have a gas station there.
Well, who's going to allow that?
We have until September, the end of September to do this.
Private property, they can put anything they want there.
Yeah. And so, they've given us the leadway until the end of September to make this decision. So, if we don't make this decision to move ahead with the national restaurant and a hotel, come October first, the owner of the property could sell it to anybody.
And they can put anybody, private property.
They could put anything there.
Yeah, they could put anything they want on there.
So, we're trying to... And that's what happens when you're trying to do these deals, sometimes it... You have to do it quickly in order to get what you want there. And people have asked for a sit-down restaurant. I can't tell you how many times I've heard that.
I agree there, we got too many fast-food restaurants in town.
I agree, and so that's... This is what we're having to do to make this happen. We have a national chain that wants to go there.
Who can afford it?
Who can afford what?
Nice restaurant like that. I'm just saying...
People go to Red Lobster, they... I mean, they...
They go to Miller Lane, all kinds of places.
Yeah. Believe me, people in the community do want it. And that way, we'll have a nice variety. We'll have a nice variety of restaurants for people to go to.
And what's happening to the mall right now? I mean, is there any...
That's another topic.
That's a whole nother topic. We're on this ordinance.
It's being developed as well, so...
To answer it...
Good questions.
To answer this question.
No, you're asking great questions, seriously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gaj Murty Hotels owns it, which Hattash Patel is part-owner in that.
Thank you. Okay, all right, thanks. Thanks.
Dave Hitchens, 305 West U. You keep saying people in the community want it. Where are they at? I don't hear nobody in here saying they want it.
I hear a lot of people.
We have emails and phone calls and all kinds of things. They don't come to commission meetings?
Well...
They do.
They have come, and most recently, when they spoke for the rental inspection program, they were treated very poorly. People who want things like this don't come to these meetings because of how poorly they're treated.
So, they get treated like we get treated?
No, I'm not treated badly.
Yes. Sorry. You lie to us, you blow us off. How long has this hotel thing been on the books? Why all of a sudden is it we got to rush it through? I mean, how long have you been working on this? What...
I can tell you, anybody in real estate knows, time is of the essence.
Yeah.
I understand that.
Yeah. You know how those... It's on, and then it's off the market.
I understand that, but how long has it been on the books that we got to blow it through in one meeting?
Because it has to be done. If we don't do it by the end of September, it's somebody else's...
And did you enter into this agreement?
That...
Chris, do you know when this... You was entered into this agreement?
The agreement is what's in the packet tonight for you to authorize. So, the discussions have been ongoing for several months with the developer, trying to arrive at a point where something like this could conceivably work. And all along, there's negotiations that are happening on his end and efforts being made on their end to secure the end-user via other routes, so that you don't have to do these things.
It's an opportunity.
It's a moving, it's a fluid process, whenever you're talking about the redevelopment of a site and the different parties involved and the things that come into play to facilitate that process.
Still, it's been... That hotel's been closed, what, a year?
Longer, longer.
It was last... It was in the winter this past year. So, it's been eight months.
Brandon Rickle, 1110 Marwood. I just have questions about particulars of this deal. What is the recourse if the developer fails to carry out their purchase of the lot?
Would you like me?
Yes.
So, the way the deal is structured is, the developer is obligating themselves to repurchase it by this time next year. If, for some reason, their lease with the sit-down restaurant doesn't materialize and/or, for whatever reason, they would decide not to pursue the redevelopment of the site, the city then would hold the property. We would own the asset, which is a key site, an important property in the community, and there'd be an opportunity to go speak with other developers to potentially do something similar, or that is also good in terms of the outcome it would produce.
And we'd have control over it.
What is the total acreage of the site?
Just shy of four and a half acres of developable land.
What's the market value of the land?
So, the appraisal is being prepared as we speak.
So, what is the purchase price?
It's the negotiated amount that the developer has with the current owner, which, Frank, correct me if I'm wrong, one point seven five?
It's one point seven five, one point eight, in that range, yes.
What is the holding cost for us over twelve months for that property?
Sorry, what was that? I can't hear you.
What are the holding costs associated with holding that property for twelve months?
Those costs are going to be reimbursed. There are insurance costs, there's taxes.
Unless they don't perform, correct?
Unless they don't perform, you're correct.
And that is contingent upon a land lease with the national chain restaurant?
Which they have a pretty good belief that that's going to be entered into very shortly. And that's gone through their process, this national... These things don't happen overnight. This national restaurant is already giving some... Somewhat of an approval, they just haven't signed the lease yet.
Is that national restaurant, does Pickwa meet the demographics typically of that restaurant?
Yes.
I'll say yes.
So, what are the barriers to them signing now, rather than after we take the risk?
Who's signing now? They're signing the lease, from what I understand, very shortly.
Yeah, so, why couldn't they sign the lease contingent upon the acquisition of the land?
I'm not sure what I understand what you mean.
Why couldn't the national chain restaurant sign the ground lease? Contingent upon...
The national chain is going to own the property, the developer's owning the property.
Okay, you called it a lease earlier. And is that... What's the size of that hotel? How many rooms is that?
Those things have not all been worked out yet, that's why we're holding it, with the developer going to purchase it in a year. And he is working on... There's no hotel...
How did you quantify the economic benefit without knowing the room size?
Well, these gentlemen here did that.
We actually have that information. So, there was a hotel study that was completed to verify that there's room in the market for a hotel product and whether or not the market could support that product. So, the study came back and indicated that a ninety-room hotel, and recommended three of the national brands that they thought would be suitable for this site, and also went through some of the additional analysis. It's about a thirty-page report, looking at the employment, the wage rates, the room charges, and all those things that would be relevant to the analysis you'd have to do to figure out how well it would perform in our market space. And so, with that information, the consultant's able to help put together the economic impact analysis, and the developer's able to pursue that potential end-user, because now you have a product that has validated that there is an opportunity in our market space for the hotel product to be successful. They've had two calls already with... They've got a broker with CBRE, who is the go-to person in terms of hotel development opportunities. So, he's got the network of contacts and the relationships. The first thing they want to know is, do you have the hotel study? So, we now have that. Again, timeframe-wise, that's part of it. It takes a minute to get that information together. And then the second piece of it is, the two conversations we've had have been very positive. Both of them have agreed that, yeah, there is an opportunity in your market space, and your hotel study says that it could work, so that's a positive first step. It's a dialogue. It doesn't... The decision doesn't get made in the first conversation.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the inputs to the outputs, to understand what homework was done before you take the risk. That's all, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Greg Neves, 1012 West Green Street. Are we going to recoup our one point eight million back out of the developer, or are we going to sell it to them for a buck?
No, the development agreement would sell it back to the developer. The repurchase price is the amount of the acquisition by the city, plus the carrying costs. So, any taxes or insurance or any other fees that we incur during the period of time that we have to hold the property, the developer will repay that when they repurchase the property from the city.
Thank you.
Jim Myers, 3580 Ziegler Road, Pickwa, Ohio. My big concern is rushing around, knowing good and well, Plan A doesn't always work. I've watched this go on and on and on the last twenty years. You can't plan on Plan A working, and if Plan A doesn't work, you better have Plan B in place, and it must all be affordable. Nothing seemed to ever get done anywhere without extra government money. This entire country, I don't even understand at all how we think we can just keep blowing money, expecting someone else to come in and bail us out when we get in problems. That's my big concern, and it does seem like things are rushing through way too fast. I know I can't run my life like that. I don't think this whole country can keep running our lives like this. And just like the hotel itself, okay, so you had issues out there. Why in the world do you clean the place out right before Christmas in the cold weather coming? I don't know, really, too many people that lived out there, but I'm just trying to think. Instead of solving problem, it creates some more problems. And unless we do these things in a planned, well-thought-out manner, we're creating more chaos for the future. And besides that, I think we all know, we can't really plan on what's going to happen next year. That's all I have to... I just want everyone to stop and think what we're getting into. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, and I would make a motion that we waive the three-reading rule for ordinance number O-10-23.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will you call the roll?
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Vedder?
Aye.
Mayor Pearson?
Aye.
Commissioner Grissom?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinz?
Aye.
At this time, we need a motion to adopt ordinance number O-10-23.
I make a motion we adopt ordinance O-10-23.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Vedder?
Aye.
Mayor Pearson?
Aye.
Commissioner Grissom?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinz?
Aye.
Ordinance number O-10-23 has been approved. Ordinance number O-11-23, first reading.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $2.5 million of special obligation non-tax revenue bonds in one or more series for the purpose of acquiring land and interest in land and all necessary appurtenances thereto, authorizing a purchase agreement and authorizing other actions in connection with such bonds.
Thank you. Whereas the last item was the funding mechanism to enable the repayment through the development agreement with the developer, this is the item that would authorize the note to borrow the money to go do the purchase and acquisition of the property, as previously discussed.
Any comments or questions from commissioners?
Chris, I asked the question earlier. I had a call from a person who thought that somehow this was going to implement a tax on individual citizens to accomplish this purpose, and I understand that's not the case. Would you amplify that, please?
That is correct. I'm going to invite Emmett to come to the lectern and Brian to speak on this. They can state it much more eloquently than I can, but the answer is no, it does not implement a tax.
Yeah, thank you, commissioners. Just in the name, non-tax revenue bonds, these will be non-tax revenues, so there won't be taxes collected to pay these bonds. It'll be from your non-tax revenues, which include all kinds of licensing fees, et cetera, and monies ultimately that you get from the state and other sources that are not tax revenues.
Thank you.
Make Mr. Cooper come up here, too.
Any comments or questions from our citizens? Is there a motion?
Do we need to waive the three reading rule? I make a motion we waive the three reading rule on ordinance number O-11-23.
Wait a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Jeff Grimes, 1314 Maplewood Drive. We had, how many town hall meetings? Two? Two town hall meetings?
Is this about this?
So, you said we were going to do a committee?
Is this about this? We're talking about?
No.
I got all kinds of stuff to talk about.
Well, you have talked about this topic.
So, later? Can I come later?
And when we have the open, you can talk about what you want to talk about. We have public comment.
I'll again make a motion that we waive the three reading rule on ordinance number O-11-23.
I'll second that. Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Grissom?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Pearson?
Aye.
Commissioner Vedder?
Aye.
Now, we need a motion for this, right?
Right.
Okay, a motion to pass ordinance number O-11-23.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will you, Melissa, call the roll?
Commissioner Grissom?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Pearson?
Aye.
Commissioner Vedder?
Aye.
Ordinance number O-11-23 has been approved. Resolution number R-105-23.
A resolution authorizing a contract with Frost Brown Todd to provide TIF and bond counsel services.
Thank you. Members of the commission, this is for the securment of services from Frost Brown Todd to support the bond paperwork and the legal instruments that support putting the TIF into place. You've met Mr. Kelly, who is here this evening. He's led us to this point. There would be a pretty significant amount of additional services to actually execute the items that we've presented to you already. So, this would authorize us to enter into a contract with him for those services.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from commission? Any questions or comments from citizens? I move to adopt resolution number R-105-23.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution adopted. Resolution number R-106-23.
A resolution authorizing the lease of former police recreational buildings located on State Route 66, Pickwa.
These next two ordinances have to deal with property at the old water plant. The one with the old police pool building, recreational building, and the other one is a building adjacent to the water plant, a couple of buildings adjacent to the water plant. The Water Department has worked out a lease with Energy Storage Response Group, LLC, their corporation that does battery testing for a variety of reasons, and they like this facility, they're going to rent it out. There's also an agreement with them that they pay, that's not here, that you approved earlier on, where they pay usage fees at various times. The lease also now requires them to have a one-building meter, two. Those folks are here tonight, if they'd like to come up. Come on up, if you'd like to come on up.
Can I ask a question? Is the pool, all of that's unoperable at this point, or?
Yeah, everything.
Yeah, okay.
Basically, the city's not using it for the water system or any other reason.
Hello?
Why don't you tell them what you do with the building, what type of work?
I'll go first on that. I'm Matt Bowman, I'm representing the Energy.
Come closer, closer to the mic.
I'm Matt Bowman, representing the Energy Security Agency. Our vision for that, which you'll see coming next, is we'll remove the abandoned pool right there and build a training facility there that is there to train dismantling of electric vehicles and a variety amount of people, you know, coming through on that exact site. So, basically, it's just right on the front, it will make a much better appearance to the front of the structure as it is now, and you'll see all that in plan development that's coming your way.
And the exciting thing is, so this is going to bring a lot of people to town, correct, to do this, to stay in our hotels and eat in our restaurants and all of those things, so.
Is there any questions I can answer about the training side?
Do the police still use the, I'm looking for Rick, do they still use the shooting range behind there?
No, it's?
We use the field for ATB training, but we have other locations we can do that, such as our range. We do use the building as a training facility, orderly.
I just would comment that I have had the personal experience of appreciating the smoke that comes out of the smoke burn facility next door. Again, if you get in the right weather inversion, so the question to you would be, do we anticipate any kind of fumes or things that might come from the plant?
I'm going to pass that on to Nick.
Thank you.
Yeah, so Matt's facility is going to be focused purely on EV training. I'm Nick Warner, COFUNDANT, PRINCIPAL of Energy Storage Response Group, doing business as Energy Safety Response Group. We do a lot of different types of battery destructive testing out there. We've actually been operating at the facility under an existing MOU the city had with BGSU since 2018. The scale of the testing, much as the scale of the energy storage industry, has grown in the last couple of years, and so we've had some, a couple of larger tests out there. But generally, it's our goal to minimize our environmental impact out there, and we've actually invested in some equipment of our own design in the last couple of months to try to better manage some of that lower-level smoke when it's produced. We know it can be a nuisance at times in the area. We try to monitor outside the fence line and inside the fence line for what those fumes are, you know. So far, we haven't seen anything of considerable alarm, but yeah, we do plan to try to better manage that going forward as we grow our own operations out there.
So, we should not anticipate smoke and all kinds of things drifting through the valley?
I can't guarantee that you'll never see or smell something if you're close by, but we're continuing to improve our efforts to reduce that smoke that's out there, as we're learning with batteries, or lithium-ion batteries in particular, they're a very different beast. The gas and smoke behavior from them continues to elude us at times, but I think we're doing better and better every time we do one of these tests to knock that down and manage it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
It's not public, if you want to talk about this topic, you can.
Jeff Grimes, 1314 Maplewood Drive. So, have you guys ever heard of hydrogen fluoride? Very toxic. They don't know what it does to people yet. Can I give you guys some pictures?
Sure.
How long have you guys known that they've been burning batteries out there?
It's been going on for, how long? It's been?
2018.
Yeah.
And did we get any type of commission approval or three readings to approve any of this? Was there anything brought before the public about this?
We approved that years ago. I mean, since I've been on the commission, this has been going, I remember approving it, so.
I'm going to give you guys some pictures, okay?
Sure. So, a little background, these tests are registered with Ohio EPA each time they're going to have one, the dates are known, we close off the roads on the bike trails. So, there are measures taken to keep the public away, and we're not sneaking anything in Ohio EPA.
No seepage into the city?
What?
No seepage into the city's water or anything?
Into the water? No, this is all plume smoke.
Close it off.
Ohio EPA has approved this burning of these batteries.
What did you, I'm sorry.
The Ohio EPA has?
Ohio EPA is aware of this burning, there is a permit applied for each time, we have fire staff out there to be, for precaution reasons, so it is highly monitored, the work.
Do you guys want to speak to that? I mean? Yeah.
Is that hydro?
It's the burning of batteries, which is probably one of the byproducts from the burning process. But the EPA is involved in monitoring.
Can I ask?
Yeah.
After a burn, what is left? And whatever is left, what happens to that?
Yeah, so to answer that question first, what is left is usually predominantly the metals of the battery. So, if you look at a lithium-ion battery system by mass, it's usually 80 to 90% metals. You have a big, heavy steel enclosure, you have metals that make up the modules that contain the batteries, and then the batteries themselves by mass are predominantly metal. Typically, when we go into these fires, 90 to, anywhere from 85 to 95% of the original mass remains. We contain that, we tarp it up as needed, and then depending on the state of the remaining batteries inside, they can be disposed of one of a couple of different ways. If they are completely destroyed, per standards laid out in 49 CFR by Department of Transportation, we can dispose of those as universal waste. If there is any kind of residual battery mass, anything in there that could still be a battery, it's required under that same CFR to be disposed of, it's what's called a DDR battery. There's a facility in Columbus, we package things according to DOT regulations in Pickwa, and then we have a hazmat company out of Columbus that comes and picks them up and takes them to Columbus for disposal. With respect to the water, the primary request of the city in 2018 when we came in was that due to the proximity to the reservoir, we collect 100% of the runoff water that we generate. All of the pads that we do our testing on have large water containment basins, we generate, we collect everything that's generated, we sample that, and then depending on what hazardous materials, if any, are found in the water, we dispose of it accordingly. To date, we have not found anything in levels that are regulated by EPA, and so typically it's disposed of as what's called non-haz waste. It's not stuff you put down the drain, but we dispose of it either locally or again take it back to a disposal facility in Columbus for disposal as non-haz waste. With respect to the hydrogen fluoride, that's a little more complicated topic than what I've spent probably the last eight or nine months talking about, not just around the country, but around the world. So, ESRG isn't just a test company. About half of our revenue is testing on a yearly basis. Actually, this year, testing has been bigger, so it's about half, but generally, it's been about a third. Most of what we do is permitting safety training for fire departments, development of emergency response plans, and then responding to emergencies for lithium-ion batteries, not just around the US, but around the globe. So, with that, with respect to the gas, there's a lot been made of hydrogen fluoride. Back in 2015, there was a report that came out that theoretically stated that large quantities of hydrogen fluoride could be produced in lithium-ion battery fires based on a fairly generous interpretation of the chemistry and a single test that was done in a lab in Sweden, which was very idealized. Since then, one of the things I have done in the last eight years of my career with energy storage safety is look to determine whether or not that is real, so we can protect firefighters from it, so we can protect the community from it, we can design better battery systems. The good news is that while fluoride does exist as an atom inside lithium-ion batteries, as does pretty much everything else in the periodic table, we do not see large quantities of HF production in lithium-ion battery fires. That's a concern that's raised frequently, but the nature of the construction of these, the nature of the way they burn, has not lent itself to HF production. In fact, in the few cases when we do see measurable levels of hydrogen fluoride, it's not actually traced to the battery, it's traced to the plastics that make up the housing of the battery, which are typically common household plastics, frequently PVDF or PTFE, which I'm probably sure everyone in this room knows as is Teflon, which we cook in daily, which in some cases, we expose to fire ourselves on a regular basis. The nature of any fire is it produces toxic gases. What we have seen in the testing that we have done is that lithium-ion batteries do not produce any gas that's not found in any other common fire, and is especially not in quantities that would match other similar materials like plastics, like structure fires, like things like that, given that the predominant mass of the battery is metal, usually again steel, aluminum, copper, simple things like that. So, part of the research that we do, and the bulk of our work is research and falls under the EPA research exemption for this type of work, is looking at what is in this gas, is trying to understand what the risks are so that we can go and speak to city councils, not just on our own behalf here, but on behalf of our customers, on behalf of energy storage and renewable energy around the globe. We're interested in this stuff, we want to keep the fire service safe, the guys in Pickwa FD that we work with know that that's our mission, and if there were things we were concerned about, we certainly wouldn't behave in the way we do, both in terms of the burning we do and also the fact that we stand 10 and 15 feet from some of these things as they burn. So, that would be my response to the comment on the show.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you get time, go ahead.
So, do they wear a mask when they're burning these batteries?
No, he said no.
So, I'm very concerned about this. So, we've got one picture that said it was in conjunction with Bowling Green State University. So, why wouldn't they burn them at Bowling Green? They're taking this stuff to Columbus, burn it in Columbus. Do you guys want this stuff burnt by the river, by the bike path, by Swift Run, by the dog park? The EPA's saying that we don't burn on windy days. You guys have seen what happens when you have a fire, smoke goes everywhere. So, not only hydrogen fluoride, I looked at the CDC website, and it's so scary what this stuff does. I'm insisting that nothing gets burned in our town, close to the river, close to the bike path. Burn it in your backyard. Guys want it burnt in your backyard? This is unacceptable. Burn it at Bowling Green, burn it in Columbus. If you're taking this stuff to Columbus, burn it in Columbus, you don't have to transport it. They say they're collecting all the water, and if you see the pictures that I have, there's just all kinds of stuff laying over there, and they have a grate. So, how are they taking all the water? And you can't tell me that if they're burning stuff, that it doesn't have stuff in the water. So, where do they take it to and where do they dump it at? Who's letting them dump this stuff? This is just absolutely crazy that this is going in our town, and probably 90% of the people don't know it, and if I show people these pictures, they're actually going to freak. Burn it behind your house. Do you guys want it burnt behind your house? Do you go to the dog park? Do you go to the bike path? Do you go to Swift Run? Where do we get our water from? This is unacceptable. There's a lot of things tonight that I find unacceptable, but this is crazy, crazy.
Thanks for your opinion.
Yeah, that's our drinking water, all of our drinking water. Those contaminants are right next door, it only takes one screw up. And look at what's happening with the EPA in East Palestine. They've still got a mess over there. So, the EPA isn't doing anything to help them people out. We shouldn't be relying on the EPA.
Thank you.
Gary Conig, Five Peregrine Place candidate for Fifth Ward Commissioner.
Gary Koenig, Five Peregrine Place candidate for Fifth Ward Commissioner. The thing that I am looking at this project, this lease, I think the city, in order to prove this, really has to establish that they have a compelling public interest in this business enterprise. Is it really necessary? As I understand it, this organization is gonna take existing city facilities, demolish them, invest capital funds in their own facilities, and they're only doing this on a short-term lease for a very little bit of money. What is the estimate for the capital investment of your company? To demolish and build these new facilities? Is what? So, you're investing a quarter million dollars in a function that the city? And how long is the lease? Two years?
Five.
Five years.
Five years at a nominal amount, a quarter million dollars. So, the city is waiving all their taxes. Schools are waiving their tax, because it's gonna be on, it's gonna be on city property.
No.
You gotta come up from the back.
It's not on city property?
No.
You don't pay property tax on city property? You pay income tax, okay? You pay part of the taxes, but they're not gonna pay any property tax. So, I would just say, they're investing a quarter million dollars. Do you want these buildings in five years? They get an option to lease it for another five years. Does the city assume ownership of the real property? That's normally the law, is the real property belongs to the city. You, as a corporation, are investing a quarter million dollars in real property that is gonna be conveyed to the city. Does the city even want it? So, I'm just saying, this is a very unusual agreement unless the city has a compelling interest in this company. Why not just sell them the property? Is there any reason why you wouldn't just sell it to them?
We cannot sell that property with the hydraulic canal and the spillway there that we own and operate. We cannot sell the adjacent property. This comes right up to the toe.
There's private property right up to the adjacent, to the spillway.
Both of these properties on the west end touch the spillway. They are at the toe of the spillway, the west end of these two properties, right before you start going up the steep hill up to the bike path.
It has to be compelling. That's my only comment. Thank you.
I have a question. I remember when we started this whole process. So, this is a, and if I am, a training program. So, you are bringing people into the community. Is that correct?
I believe this all started back in about twenty eighteen with the previous city manager, and him and the police, or the fire chief designated that area for these training opportunities that Nick and his group have been carrying through since then.
Right, which means you're bringing people into the community from, I know Bowling Green was one of the people we talked about and different things like that.
So, I would say, all told, if you wanted to break out what's being proposed here, there's really four independent activities going on here. Three are related to training. So, ESA, which is a separate, completely separate business from ESRG, is gonna do training related to electric vehicles.
Right.
ESRG conducts two different types of business on the site. We do our own training for fire services and for subject matter experts of our customers, and then we also have the testing business. And then the city, as of today, has finally started construction on your own burn facility, which was the original plan for the facility.
Right.
I would also add that the cost share that the city used back in twenty twenty, I believe it was, to get the state grant that's paying for that was actually money that had been invested by ESRG in the site up to that point. I believe it was about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So, to the point about the quarter of a million, that's just ESA's intended investment in the site. ESRG to date, I would say, had probably invested close to half a million in the site. I have about another four hundred thousand in development underway right now, and I have no reason to believe that we are gonna slow down at all based on the way the industry is growing. And that's not just testing and lighting things on fire. That's a number of other activities related to forensic investigation, potentially microgrids and other testing activity out there. To the point about bringing people in, it's really not just testing. Today, based on, it's not just training. The forensic activity we're conducting today has seven people from across the globe. We've had people from Israel, the Middle East, probably every country in Europe at this point, Canada, Mexico, Australia, Japan, South Korea. We've brought people from around the globe to Pickwa, and there has been interest expressed to us on multiple occasions from our customers about development here. The interstates, the rail infrastructure, warehousing infrastructure. Pickwa's attractive for a lot of reasons. And for those paying attention to the economy in the state of Ohio, it's not just Intel in central Ohio. There are battery factories going in everywhere. We're working with the state now to try to get on state maps in terms of energy storage infrastructure to bring in economic development. So, when it comes to us just leasing and then leaving in five years, it's actually ESRG's intent to rebase our business here. Right now, we're set up in Delaware County. Once this lease goes through, we will be reestablishing ESRG in Pickwa County. We will be a Pickwa resident, if you will, of a business. So, we're committed to the town. We appreciate the relationship we've had with the city, with the fire department, the police department, the water department. We look forward to continuing to work with you guys.
And like I said, I can remember back in eighteen, this whole thing was we were bringing people here and from around the world. So, again, they're eating in our restaurants. They're staying in our hotels. There was conversation about using the Fort Pepper Plaza for meetings if you needed to do that. And you've been doing it since eighteen.
Yep.
So, we're just expanding on what that looks like.
Yep, and formalizing the relationship. Originally, it was under PGSU. ESRG has grown enough now that we can stand on our own. We're happy to be able to do that, and you know, there's more than just the lease. The use fee is actually significantly greater than the lease that we pay for you guys for testing, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else would like to speak first.
Jeff Grimes, thirteen fourteen Maplewood. There is no amount of money or amount of people that come into our town to have batteries being burnt. I don't care if you're making ten million dollars. What is the long-term effect on the air, our water, our bike path, our dog park, our town? This is, why won't they go to Bowling Green? Why wouldn't they burn the batteries in Bowling Green if the Bowling Green is sponsoring it or studying it? Why don't they burn the batteries in Delaware if that's where they're from? Why are they burning batteries here? And I ask you guys, do you want them burnt in your backyard? There's no amount of money that is worth having something that, we don't know what it does to people. Who's gonna be responsible for the code violations there? I'm pretty sure that there was a bunch of code violations on the atomic power plant that were ignored by the EPA or the city. This is unacceptable. I don't want this in my town, and I'm gonna say that anybody that, if they want it, then burn the batteries in their backyard. I don't want this. This is unacceptable.
Thank you, Jeff.
Tonya Blair, Realtor. I just had a couple questions. Is seven typically your size of students that you have in your class? Your training, how many people are usually in a class? You just said that your training had seven people. How much money do you think that's gonna bring into our community? What I'm asking typically, how many do you have? Would you feel comfortable burning these in your backyard? No, I meant in your personal backyard.
Ma'am, the commission rules require you to address council.
I had a few questions about this. They can't answer them. He could.
I understand, but you would address them to council, and then they would ask.
Fair question. Would you burn them in your backyard?
Yes.
Okay.
Burn is a precaution.
If I may.
Yes.
That particular test in question, when the bike path was closed, was a recent test. It was not intended to go into the evening. Unfortunately, it did. We were actually recreating a fire from another event in the US that occurred in the last couple of months. We did let it go. Since twenty eighteen, we've had three fires that have gone through the evening. It's not something that we like to do, but again, if the collection of the data we feel is necessary to do that, then we'll let it go only under strict fire watch. So, they're never left abandoned. We understand that when people drive by from the road, sometimes the signs are hard to see. It's our intent to put a lighted sign up there eventually that informs people things are going on. We're not trying to hide anything, because we don't want people seeing a fire and calling nine-one-one. So, we're aware of that. It's our intention to limit the tests when those occur, but there have been three since twenty eighteen where that's occurred. And then, sorry, why the bike path was closed on that particular test, when it typically isn't. That was a very, very large test, one we've never done anywhere near that size before and have no plans to do again in the near future, so.
Thank you.
Still, we could put signage out by the road and whatnot when we're doing testing.
Yes, we can, and we could keep using our website on those larger tests, yes.
Okay.
Jim Myers, thirty-five eighty Sixth Road. My big concern is, I live not too far from there. I didn't even know this was going on. Has it been kept kinda undercover on purpose or?
No. He just told you that it's been posted and it's advertised.
It was approved five years ago by the commission, the initial work and project.
Okay, and then is there any way we can check as far as the future? As far as increased burning or reports, or is there anything, website we can view to monitor what's going on?
What kinda, what are you looking for, like certain data? Because I knew you just mentioned a lot of the data that you've captured over five years. Is that what you're talking about, like whether there's contaminants in the water, or is that what you're searching for?
Yeah, basically, I doubt if my neighbors or anyone knows about this. There's been no discussion around our area at all, and we go past there all the time.
Well, I'd say that's a good thing, if you're saying, even knowing you live in that area, how much they keep it contained then.
Yeah. Okay.
You could sign up for alerts, and they can alert you when they're doing it next time. I said we could add that to the alerts. I didn't say.
Gary, come on up.
Gary Koenig, Five Peregrine Place candidate for Pickwa City Commission. On the last resolution, you apparently believe it's a compelling interest to have this here, and I respect that decision. I would suggest that the property tax on that level of improvement, capital investment, over the period of the lease is in the hundreds of thousands of dollars that you're waiving. And the actual amount of income that you're getting on the lease is nominal. So, maybe consider a business case on getting a better lease. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, sorry for the feedback. You know, there are other considerations that the city does weigh in, and one of those is economic development. We have an incubator downtown, a brand-new business, rolled ice cream. It's less than market rate on the rent, so the city's subsidizing that in a way. But that being said, we had another incubator project in there before that that was successful. And so, when you look at stimulating activity in a city, especially where you have something that is not found anywhere else across our country, and we're bringing people in from the outside, and again, it's the bigger picture of economic development that unfortunately, the public does not understand with the amount of site selectors that have come here, and they talk about, you know, battery, battery storage. If you look at what's going on in Sydney with SEMCorp and, you know, the film manufacturing that's gonna happen up there, it positions us very well for the future to have those relationships. And it quite honestly is, it's a network-based opportunity with economic development.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Tonya Blair. I just wonder if anyone's checked and found out what kind of insurance they have and what kind of liabilities we would have after they're gone, if there is damage to the ground. I mean, property rights are what I'm about. Obviously, you know that. And this property belongs to the city. We lease it to someone, and it devalues it. What have we done? We're going backwards. We're not going forward. I don't know if this is the right thing or not. I'm not against. I'm not for.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, we need to look at all the answers here, not just say yes and pass it through. look at all the answers here, not just say yes and pass it through, because it's not that kind of an issue. It could affect our children, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren, and even further down the line. We don't know this.
I will say, I did look at the contract. There is an insurance clause and indemnification clause, too, to address that.
My other question is, has anyone looked into the previous sites where they've done this? And what is the ramifications there? Just questions that I kind of had in my head. So hopefully you guys got questions and thinking about things, too.
Can you say why they stopped in Delaware? You said they were, but...
Yeah, the previous test site got turned into a fire station.
Oh.
And a school.
There is a weird career separation between Delaware and Career Center. Politically, they moved those operations outside of town and converted our site around the same time the opportunity came for us to come out here.
Thanks.
Thank you. I move that we adopt resolution number R-107-23.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution carried. Resolution number R-108-23.
A resolution to levy assessments for the cost of nuisance abatement.
Yes, Commissioner, each time, each year at this time, we present an item to you to authorize us to forward the amounts that were assessed to properties for various services, primarily grass mowing, trash cleanup, and demolition activity to the property. The county commissioner, or the county auditor accepts the assessments once a year, the first week of September. So passing the site in this evening would allow for us to advance those dollar amounts to the county auditor so that they can place the assessment against each of the individual parcels where those services were necessary to be provided. I will point out in the staff report, we referenced a dollar amount that's incorrect. The actual total of the assessments that were forwarding to the county auditor is $71,529, not the $120,000 that was referenced.
Comments or questions from commission? Comments or questions from citizens? I move that we adopt resolution number R-108-23.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution carried.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Sorry.
It's time for public comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the city commission regarding agenda items, issues, or to provide information. Comments are requested to be limited to five minutes, and specific questions should be addressed to the city manager's office. At this time, we have the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. I have two items. There, I actually had some of my thunder stolen earlier. The delivery of the burn building was received today. They start erection tomorrow. It should be completed this week if all goes well and the weather holds out. The units are basically, they're storage units that they erect and then weld in place. So it's very quick. It's an erector set, if you will. And so we're very excited to see that happen. Another bit of good news, as you know, we've had some changes in the fire department, and today we had five emergency medical technicians start, as well as one paramedic. And as our HR director said, the gaggle of them went through today, and they were indoctrinated in their day one of being in Pickle Fire. So that was good for us. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, Chief Byron, would you be willing to come forward and talk about the children in our community and Fountain Park?
I assume you're referencing the homicide in Park. We can't comment on that right now. It's an open investigation that has just recently gone through the grand jury indictments, and there's additional indictments that are likely. So we, what I can say is there was no, the threat, we're confident we have the individual who's involved and the only individual that's involved. Again, it's an open investigation.
So is there a massive increase in crime in Pickle?
No. Our calls for service are consistent with previous years. We don't have an increase at this time. You know, unfortunately, in our community, in a very short period of time, we had a number of occurrence, crime occurrences that are very public facing. I mean, you get five vehicles stolen one night, people notice that. And then obviously, a homicide, everyone's going to know that in the county. But the important thing is, is, you know, obviously, securing your property is just important to secure your vehicles. And in this case, we had five vehicles stolen one night. And it was an occurrence, it actually was two phases of it. They had taken a couple of the cars early in the evening and that were disposed of in Dayton, and then they came back up, and there were three other vehicles that were taken. So all five vehicles either had the keys in the vehicle, or the proximity, the starters were close enough proximity that the vehicle could start. One of the vehicles, they shut off, and they weren't within the proximity card, so it wouldn't restart, so they abandoned that one. So again, if you lock your vehicles and secure the keys, you know, it's very unlikely that those are going to occur, especially in that quantity, given that, you know, the day of stealing from cars has kind of gone to the wayside. Nobody has 50 CDs in them anymore. So there's not as much in there of value for people to take. So if you, they're not going to break windows typically to get into those cars. So if you do secure it, your generally vehicle's going to be safe. And it's, you know, the occurrences of windows being broken is generally because they see a purse or a wallet or cash sitting on the console that they can't get to. So, you know, obviously, you don't want to keep valuables in your vehicle. So although there was five in one night, that's very rare for that to occur. I don't recall in 24 years we ever had five cars stolen in a night. So, you know, the one thing I will say, though, is it is very common at this time of year that, you know, the kids are gearing up to get back to school, and they realize that their curfew's going to go from 10, 11 o'clock to eight or nine by their parents. So they had that last burst of freedom. And we normally around this time do have a number of cars that get entered into and items taken out. And we haven't seen that this year, for whatever reason. Again, it could be because of less valuables in the car. It's not as, you know, lucrative to them. So again, our crime rate has not increased. Again, we just had a very large number of public-facing incidents that occurred in a one-week period. So the perception, I understand that completely. I will say that on the night of the vehicles being stolen, we had an officer that observed one of the vehicles, and it appeared, something appeared suspicious, given the way they were driving. And we actually attempted to stop the vehicle. The vehicle fled from us at a high rate of speed, passing cars on the right in a one-way, or a very narrow street, so we discontinued that pursuit. So the guys were out there. It was just one of those situations where someone felt putting the public at risk was more viable to them than their being caught, so they took off. And we weren't willing to pursue based on, at that time, we had a suspicious vehicle. We had no idea it was stolen, but it wasn't worth the flight risk. So again, the guys and gals are out there. It's just sometimes, you know, the people are going to do whatever they want to do, and that's a decision they make, and sometimes it's not the right one, so.
I think Gary wants a comment.
Just a question. Some of the other cities have these solar license plate readers, and they're spot on getting criminals. Is that something Pickle's looking at? Because they nail real quick.
Well, we have discussed that. And I will say that there is one north of town on 25A, and there's one south of town on 25A. The vehicles that left our area went down I-75. There are none on I-75. So that's why we weren't able to pick it up on flock. It was actually through the flock cameras, is what they're called, that we were able to recover two of the vehicles in Montgomery County.
Is the police force up to date on enough personnel that we should have? I know the last couple of years, you were down.
We've been down as many as eight, but today we are only down one. So we'll start a process here, I would say, at the first of the year. We just, we're bringing on three here September 18th, so we'll only be, have one open position. So yeah, we are very well staffed right now, and equipment and everything else, so.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here, and we appreciate your comments. Commissioners' comments?
We knew in public comment.
Yeah, you skipped right over those.
Well, let's go back. Let's go back. Public comment. Come on up.
I didn't know if you had any other questions.
What the public comment go, and then I'll ask, I guess.
I'll start out with the fact, I think you put a guerrilla ordinance in place to handle a very small problem. And I would suggest this, since other entities within the county do something like this, what about putting out a shameless in the paper, even though the paper only comes out two times a week from Troy?
Rent a billboard, an electronic one, and put it out. I hear you. I've seen Sydney do stuff like that.
Those properties or property owners that are causing the violations, causing this guerrilla effort, you know, can be shamed by the public. I mean, I know an individual reads the health department reports in the paper, and she doesn't want to go to some restaurants.
Exactly.
I will end with this. I understand beggars' night will be on the 26th. Chief, are you still looking to pass Alcandy again this year?
That is planned, yes.
So everybody understands that was something that started back in the 60s, about the Pickle JC's, working with the police department. And for 20-some years, I did it. So I would offer the opportunity to anybody to do a ride-along and do that. And hopefully, you don't have my experience like I did, where I rode Officer Palmer the one year. They had a swoop going on that night, and I made two stops, and I was cleaned out. But it's interesting, and you're right, it can be a warm evening, or it can be a cold rainy evening. But it's something I would suggest that anybody volunteer to ride along with.
That's a good idea.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Be fun, too.
David, change 305 Westview. Back to my comments about, you all say you get plenty of phone calls, but we don't know that. So the best thing for us to do is call you guys instead of coming to commission meeting. And maybe you'll hear us more and respect us more. Because I don't see we get any respect when we come here. I came a couple of years ago for several meetings. I got tired of coming because it's disrespect and nobody listening to us. And why come? And I probably won't be back again. I mean, this is ridiculous. Should we call you? Will we get more response and more respect?
I've always encouraged, if you want to call, happy talk. I do want people to come.
I'll get you a Coke if you want. Welcome to do that.
I just, I don't know. It's hard to swallow that, you know, everybody here is against it. Nobody for it is here, other than city personnel.
Dave, I got your email. I'll send you some emails of the people that I have for it.
Well, I believe you. It's not that I don't believe you, but...
Some people are afraid. There was a person at the last town hall that we had that was for it, okay? And she was afraid to say anything at that, at that meeting. I mean, and she had a well-developed list of complaints. I mean, she, this is what's wrong with my apartment. Now, it was individual. She's going to resolve it by putting her money in escrow. I was impressed. I mean, she had a plan, but she was afraid to say anything. But thank you. Stop by any time. You're welcome to.
Oh, it does come down. We'll see how well I can predict. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Kirby, and I'm not a local resident. I'm actually from Dayton. But I'm here on behalf of a resident. And as I've been watching the meeting this evening, it's been very interesting. Thank you. I think this relates to just the issue of communication with residents in general about city policies and anything, and what their recourse is are. The resident I was contacted by has a disability and has an issue with the local carport ordinance because she saved for 11 years to get one of those national companies to put up a carport. I'm not sure exactly which one, but I think we're all familiar. The same companies will come, will put up a sun porch, will put up a carport, whatever. Saved for 11 years to put that up because she is on a fixed income with a disability. And then she was told after it was up that it either had to come down, or she had, or she had, it was either going to be taken down, or she needed to rebuild it with the appropriate materials that would, would match the ordinance and would match her, the siding of her house. And she called me in tears, basically saying, I have no way to afford this. There's nothing I can do. They're going to take things away. She felt like she was threatened by the city inspector that was talking to her about this. And I said to her, well, it seems to me, since she did put up the carport for a reason related to her disability, that this would be an accommodation under the Americans with Disabilities Act that she be allowed a variance to the ordinance to maintain her carport as it was. So I reached out, looked on the website to see what I can find as far as who the ADA contact was. Could not find anybody. Left a message on the law office voicemail, asking who the appropriate person was to contact about that. Did not hear back. Then I sent a letter to Mr. Patrizio about three weeks ago, again, explaining the specifics of the situation and saying, this was a resident in true need, and we wanted to be able to work this out. And for those of you who may or may not be familiar with the ADA, the main question when you're looking at reasonable accommodation under the ADA is, does providing the accommodation present an undue burden to the entity, which in this case would be the city of Piqua? Or does it represent a substantial change in operations of programs or services? And here as I can tell, because the resident in question did send me a picture of her carport, seems well-built, very attractive. It's, you know, it is fiberglass, it's not wood, but it's certainly not an eyesore. To me, it just appeared to be a cosmetic issue and not anything that would create some undue burden on the city. So, and I have been told that there are other residents with disabilities that are having issues with things like getting permits for, to build accessibility ramps on their houses and other sorts of things. So what I would urge the city commission as a whole to do is look at, number one, your ADA compliance, and are you aware of where the ADA ties in in granting variances to people when they have these issues come up, related to ordinance? And number two, putting on the city website, this is who you need to contact if you have a reasonable accommodation request or concern, so that they have clear contact information, they have forms they can fill out, and they have recourse they can go to. Because to me, this should have been a really relatively simple, straightforward issue. Unfortunately, I was hoping to be able to meet the lady this evening. She and I have only had the opportunity to talk on the phone, and said to say, she is so nervous about this in the last month, that she is not even here this evening because she is literally afraid that one of these days, a city truck is going to pull up and pull down her carport, especially as worse weather is coming on us in the fall and the winter. And to me, as many people have pointed out this evening, disabled and elderly residents of fixed incomes are... of fixed incomes are a large part of the city of Piqua population. We need to make sure that they feel respected and welcome. The ADA, if you don't know, is a complaint-driven law, so there are sometimes people who think, "Well, if somebody doesn't file a complaint, it's not really going to be an issue." And as an advocate, I'll be the fir-, I'm an advocate, not an attorney. And as an advocate, a lot of our job is to help people work through things and resolve them, but we also have an obligation to let them know how to file a complaint when their issue isn't being addressed in another way. So, I guess what I'm advising you as a city is, please be proactive about the ADA, not reactive, because this is just one resident who happened to Google me and find me, and I reassured her, "Oh, don't worry, this should be relatively simple." And we're now a month later, and she is in her home still terrified about the amount that it's gonna cost her, because, again, she spent 11 years saving for this. And I don't think, I'm not going to speak for everybody behind me, but I, I don't think there's a lot of you, or even myself, that would have had to per se save that long for something that she had put up, and then to be told, "Well, I'm sorry, it needs to come down because it doesn't meet our design specifications." And I'm not asking the city to come up with money to help people meet the design specifications, because I hear a lot of budgetary concerns from your audience out there. But I'm saying, instead of sending out city people to then take things like that down and, or have issues like this come up, please, please be proactive about the ADA, and let people know that even if there's, if there's an ordinance that they cannot meet because of their disability, and in this case, as I said, this is something she's specifically constructed for disability safety, please let those residents know you do have recourse. You may request a variance. It's not a big deal.
Can you stick around after the meeting?
Absolutely.
So that, I would like, Mr. Patrizio, can you...
No, I was gonna apologize. I did not receive her letter. I don't know what happened, but I'll meet with you, actually, if you want to go outside, I'll meet with you, get the address, and talk to you now.
Yeah, that'd be delightful if we could. I emailed it, it didn't bounce, so, but things happen electronically, so.
I'll go outside with you.
Okay.
And you're appointed contact, and you can contact any of us.
Okay.
I'm willing to, I mean, we're willing to work. We can't, I don't want her sitting in fear. That's ridiculous.
Well, and thank you for being an advocate. That is, that is...
It's a big job. I appreciate you.
It's a big job, but thank you. She was lucky she found you.
Yeah, thanks, Jennifer.
Google is a wonderful thing.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Okay. We'll move, we'll move on to Commissioner's comment.
Do we have any more public comment?
Jeff, you had a public comment earlier. Did you want to come up?
Yeah.
No, absolutely.
Jeff Grimes, 1314 Maplewood. Here I am again. So, you're, you work for us. You're not working for us. And I apologize if anybody was frightened because of their views, but I just don't think that you're listening to us. You had the town hall meetings, okay? And I thought we had something worked out.
I thought we were working on something, too.
So, here's what we had all ready to go for you guys, and so now you're, you're not listening to us.
We're listening. I told you what we were gonna do, the rental.
Yeah, but you guys already put the ordinance into place. That's not listening to us. So, here was, here was all our suggestions. You didn't even get a chance to look at them. Wow, the battery things really got me. I didn't know anything about it. I don't think very many people know anything about it. And like I said before, if it's no big deal, then why aren't they burning them in Bowling Green? I think that you didn't listen to us there. How, so they said they're doing air monitoring. I didn't see anything out there for any type of air monitoring. They, I did see a building that was built, and you can see on the pictures that you got black stuff coming out of the doors, and it looks like it's been so hot that there's probably a gap in the roof this tall. So, I, I don't understand how you can want anything like this going on in our community. It's just unacceptable. First of all, it's so close to the river. We get our water out of Swift Run, the bike path, the dog park, the Johnson Farm, the Langs, the cemetery. When you burn stuff, it's invisible. The air carries it. It goes into the soil. And like another gentleman said before, look what happened in East Palestine. The trains derailed, they all caught fire. They're not, they're not doing anything for those people. And I, I don't even, I don't even know where to, where to start. This is just mind-boggling. You're supposed to work for us, and you haven't listened to a thing that any of us has said in at least a month. Thank you for your time.
It's me again. I'm gonna echo exactly what he just said. I feel like I've wasted my time going to town hall meetings, going to meetings with Chris, because we thought we had a resolution. It was just gonna be a registration to start, and we were gonna figure it out from there. And we thought we were gonna have a citizens team and maybe have inspectors, realtors, people who understood what was going on. I thought this is where we were gonna go. But instead, we come here and it got passed through, bullied through, just like I said. Also, wanted, would like to know who our city insurance company is.
Mavirma.
Mavirma.
It's Mavirma.
Who?
Mavirma. It's a consortium.
Because it's probably gonna go up, because there's lawyers lining up to sue you after you passed this, so. And I know you guys know this. That's probably what you're, you were expecting. But I do, I really feel like you didn't listen to us at all. I really thought you did. There was times when I thought, "They really are taking this to heart, and they are listening." And I even told you that, Chris. I said, "They listened to us," and I really felt you did. But today, I don't feel like you ever did.
Any more public comment? Commissioner Heinz.
Thank you, Mayor Pearson. I'm sorry Chris Schmiesing left. I wanted to just appreciate him for, we passed a lot of things tonight that dealt with economic development, that dealt with moving our city forward, and really continuing to put Piqua on the map. And I know Chris has worked many long hours and is always out there burning the pavement to make those things happen, so I just wanted to publicly recognize him, and also to recognize our staff. Those of you that are here tonight, thank you for all that you do, and we are very fortunate to have the good staff that we have here in our city, so I just wanted to say thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Pearson.
I don't have anything for tonight.
Vice Mayor.
School's back in session, so I'd like everybody to be cognizant of kids going to school. The rental inspection program, I voted against it, not because I didn't believe that we didn't need it, I just didn't think, I think a registration is where we should start, kind of like Sidney, and then work our way towards the inspection part. Lots of other reasons I had, and we just, you know, I wanted to build some trust with the citizens, because we don't have that. You know? And we still, it's, the implementation for the inspection part is about 18 months, so we have time to, to, to build some of that trust. One of the things I want to do is a rental, rental commission in which realtors, landlords, homeowners, someone from the commission, all sit down and talk. It's a board, that's something we can work on. I'm willing to sit down and, and, and talk to people about that. We're gonna take our time to develop that, so that that's in place, so that if people have complaints, they can go to that committee and, and discuss their complaints, and hopefully they can work them out before it goes any further. So, I mean, if we can't, I mean, if we have to have this, then we, if we have to have the rental inspection program, then we need a mechanism for citizens to be heard. I know the BZA has been said to be that, but I think from the citizens themselves, there needs to be a mechanism from which they are heard. So, we'll work on that. I will put out feelers and ask for a meeting at some point in time for people who are interested, and then we'll solicit, we'll come up with a, a, a program guide for it, and then solicit for people who want to be on that committee, so that we have people from the citi-, from the city, citizens, so they can go to and, and talk to about. So, I've had a lot of complaints about stuff going on in the city last several weeks. One of the complaints was about colonial terrorists. I did get an answer about it, but city manager, were you able to, you were gonna...
Yeah, I mean, so I did provide the email back to everybody and discuss the operations, and then we put something in place to make sure that the training operation wouldn't take place on private property again. And as a matter of fact, I have a draft, it's a property access agreement, and we haven't traditionally used one of those. It's something that I've used in the past. It not only insulates the property owner from anything, but it also insulates the city, because then it's pretty clear-cut, and it doesn't matter whether it's a stormwater issue, running wires to the house for service, or putting up additional security light through power, could be public works trimming trees, anything of that nature. So, the agreement will more than take care of this one in particular issue. Thank you.
Appreciate that. I don't know. I hear your frustration, the citizens' frustration, but then I also hear all the good stuff that's going on in Piqua as well. And I want to say that our, our city employees are doing a great job. From the trash people who have consistently done a great job in my house and my son's house, I'm, I'm, I'm happy with them. I very much. So, I mean, if I could get out there in time, I'm usually at work, I'd give them a high five to the department heads who, who are seeing over there, people, they're doing a great job. And I specifically want to commend Chris Schmiesing for bringing us opportunities consistently. I, I know he's, he's trying. He's had a lot on his plate. Some of that's gonna be changed a little bit, but, I mean, he's focusing on bringing us business opportunities that will make the city stronger, give us more employees, and thereby more tax dollars. I mean, I just, I just want to thank him and thank all our city employees, and appreciate what they've done, so. Just, I'm done at this point. Thanks.
Thank you. I want to say a, a good congratulations to the electric department. Some citizens may not know that we sent five electric employees to Florida to help with the reconstruction of, of electric lines and those kinds of things down there. And I think sometimes they don't always get the credit they deserve for, for, for volunteering to do that. My understanding, it was, that was a cooperative project with AEP.
I'm sorry. Amp Ohio.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, Amp Ohio, yeah. And so, again, they didn't have to do that, and then the system allowed them to do that, so a good comment for them. Kevin, I shared an article from the Dayton paper about, about the PFABs, and, and I found it interesting, and my understanding is that we will have a new water quality report that comes out for 2023 pretty quickly, July 1st.
The water quality report is, so if it's for 2022, it's, it has to come out by July 1st of 2023. That's the deadline. We could probably get it out in April or May if we wanted to. We usually put it out in June, just staying on that schedule.
Well, I think it's, it's kind of interesting that, that, you know, my understanding is that those chemicals basically are airport-driven, and, and yet, we, we may find them here.
Yeah, I think we're gonna be okay. Most of those chemicals end up in groundwater, and with our source of water being surface water, it hasn't been found in surface water across the country. So, it's more of a groundwater issue over years and years accumulating in the groundwater.
Yeah, interesting. Then the, I want to say thank you to Aaron Morrison for the updated property maintenance report. I think it came out today, maybe, and I picked it up off the internet, so I think we're up to like 1,900 complaints, of which 80% are, are resolved satisfactorily. And I think that's a good credit to, to the department for, for doing that, so I appreciate all of that. And the other thing I would offer again is, lock your cars every time you get out of them. That's, the bottom line is, you know, let's take away the opportunity for people to, to misuse our, our, our homes and our, and our, and our vehicles, so hope people will do that. Thank you.
I just wanted to remind people that school's back in session, and children are walking to school, biking to school, and they are also at bus stops. So, keep, be mindful that they're out, and just drive safely and carefully. Thank you to the first responders. Our fire department responded to a fire, a house fire on Caldwell. Family's house was on fire, and many of the local fire departments were called in to help respond to that fire. So, I just want to thank them for their efforts and their hard work. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.